Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Thank you for coming. If you'd stand with me and recite the pledge, we'll get this meeting underway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and consider it a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Paul, could you lead us in your location, please?
Heavenly Father, tonight, I just honor you by saying thanks to what you're doing in our community. Just thank you for being the all-knowing that you are. We thank you for helping those that are serving our community. We have your blessing from there and all the councilmen and all the workers make this community go. We thank you for all the citizens of this community that you've allowed us to be here. You have the purpose you have applied for us, and we just acknowledge that tonight. Thank you for helping to raise this community up to where you want it to be, where it can be an example to other communities in the area and even in the world. We give you thanks for it now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Judges were nice today, weren't they? Nobody blew away, so that's good. A roll call. Alderman Ward one, Jeff Botkins. Captain, are you ready from Alderman Ward one? Alderman Ward one, Jason Osborne.
Here.
Alderman Ward two, Mark Greeney.
Here.
Alderman Ward two, Adrian Saunders.
Here.
Alderman Ward three, Juven Moss.
Here.
Alderman Ward three, Kent Schumaker. At this time, I'd like to announce public comment. So do you have anybody that would not quite say it then? Mr. Shider?
I had a couple of questions on the utility.
Sure.
On the, I know we used to do the promise to pay, and they had done away with that. I don't know if there was abuse with that or not, but had you considered maybe offering it, you know, and if they reneg on their payment or something, don't let them do it a second time in that year or something?
I think that was already to be enforced in that nature. The call wasn't followed through.
Okay.
And we're going to discuss at a little later time in the meeting the utility policies that we're working on.
Okay, cool. And then also with the industrial, I don't know, is 30 minutes enough? Notice them to shut down properly?
I think when I spoke with the people over at the factory, they said they would need about an hour to properly shut down to make sure their metals didn't freeze up and
Right.
and room operations.
Cool.
Yeah. So who do we have here from the Roberts Garage? Yes.
Do I need to come up there?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, my name's Bobby Laird from Robert Crowe's Co., and I appreciate you guys' time to see if we can try to make it very comfortable together busy. Recently, we purchased some property just on the edge of Mineral City, east side of town. The outer road, just east of Pete's Cove. Our plan is for the city, or for our business, is open up a towing and recovery shop along with commercial maintenance on semis, commercial vehicles, you know, whatever has an engine will work on. We don't plan on getting into the car business, working on cars. You know, there's already kind of car shops here, but we see the note, a need for towing and recovery in this area. One of the big things I always like the city to know is we like to have a relationship with the city, with any community we're in, to let you know we're here, we hire all local help. There are probably, right now, there's three to four people going to be here with, and it will be expanding as we grow. We bought a Redmond farm, as you owned the farm before. I think we bought 16 acres is what's there. We've re-amped the barn that was there. Definitely do something to go look at. If you've seen it before, look at it now. It looks like a totally new building. Come springtime, spring or fall, as soon as our materials come in, we'll be building another big shop there. With that being said, just to let you guys know, when we come to a town, like we have a location in New London and one in Durham, all of our purchases come from this town. All of our fuel, we buy every truck that's in this area, we'll be buying fuel. Anything we can buy in this town, we can buy in this town. We donate to, I mean, we sponsor all teams. We do anything and everything we can for the community, help the community. We're already somewhat involved in Mineral City, as you know, the big truck dying stuff. We participate in that when we can. We have a very good working relationship with the Mineral City Fire Department. Very good fire department. Do several training exercises with other fire departments, along, you know, with New London, Mineral City, and plan to keep doing that. With that being said, also to help the Mineral City, we would like to maybe talk to you guys and approach the fact of maybe annexing our property into the city. A lot of people frown on that. They say, why are you going to pay city taxes on all of your equipment and stuff? But it's a hard way of giving back, and you guys actually benefit tax dollars for seeing us here. And then also the way we can benefit from the stuff the city has to offer, you know, the utilities and all that stuff. With that being said, even our records, like in New London, our main office is in Durham. I'm sure everybody knows equipment is super expensive right now. Any piece of equipment that runs down here will pay taxes if annexed into the city, to the city, for that equipment being down here. Open door policy for anybody to come down and see what equipment we have. It's not a $2,500 record. You're talking several thousand dollars for these records, in fact, hundreds of thousands of dollars for these records. A brand-new record this day and age is almost a million dollars. There's, right now, this on-engine that comes down here is two heavy records, a rollback and a service truck. So that's quite a bit of money that we're investing down here, along with the property and the building, and another building. And like I said, when it comes to hiring, if they have a local address, they're going to have a precedence over someone from far away. Like myself, when I took the job in New London, one of my requirements was to move to the area. Just for the simple fact, you know, a person that's invested in that town, lives in that town, has their kids in that town, is going to try harder to make the business succeed. I'd like for you guys to maybe think about annexing us in if there's legal costs. Hey, let's talk about it. We're all about doing what's fair. Our business is very family-oriented. We take pride in our guys. You'll always see kids. At our shop, there's kids there every day. Stop in the city. Our bus, in our New London stop, that's where the bus stop sat, and it wasn't there until we requested it to be there. I'm very invested in the town, and we want to do the same for Mineral City. We want to be invested in this town. This has been a, this has been a step we've been trying to approach for three or four years. And finding property in this town, close to this town, was very, very hard and extremely costly. The fact, well, I kind of had an end with property because it's my mother-in-law's property, part of it anyway. They wouldn't tell us all, but they sold us enough to get going here. But I just want to, I mean, a lot of people, you know, worry about the fact that there's going to be a bunch of John playing around. You guys are more than welcome to tour any one of our facilities that we have. None of that happens. The part about our business when we went there is we went to every neighbor, well, the immediate neighbor was only one there, and made sure that it was okay with us either buying a property and building it. Because you've got to have good neighbors, you know, to keep an eye on everything and to get along, and that's what we do. And believe me, if there was ever an issue with, you know, hey, this truck is going through town too fast, come and talk to us. We'll make sure it stops. We'll make sure that it is right. And with that being said, I really think this area, that it will grow. And with the property we have, we have plenty of room to grow. And like I said, if you guys know anybody looking for a job, mechanical job, running a wrecker, we're always open to a policy. We'll entertain the thought of anybody. At my shop alone, I've got, I think, six guys, but I've probably got eight or nine part-time guys. These guys range from age 21 years old to a 75-year-old man. And they help us from time to time, whether it just be run parts, whether it be, you know, I had a mid-70-year-old guy that day on St. Louis sports. So, you know, we want to get back to the town as much as we can. I hope you do consider the annexation deal. I mean, 16 acres, a couple, you know, and the building we have down there, it was a very old building, but it's kind of my father-in-law, you know, man, that was an old barn, and that's why we saved it. And I urge you guys to go down and look at it. It looks like a brand-new building. I mean, it don't, truthfully, we'd probably have more, we'd have less money in building the building than what we have in that one. But it's a part of the old history that we want to save, and that's what we did. So like I said, if annexation would work for you guys, that would be great with us. Any costs, talk to us, and we'll work it out because it's, we did talk to Jennifer today. She did give us a package of stuff for some business license and stuff. Brian is going to be taking care of all that. He said there's some more paperwork he's got to get together, but we'll have that all there. Kind of our fault there. I didn't get on the ball later to get the business license, but things moved a lot quicker than what we thought they would.
Is that property located in Rose County?
It is Rose County, yes it is.
That's just east of Walkers?
Yeah, yep, yep, just, well, you have Walkers, then you have another little house. And then, and our property starts there, and then it goes, it goes down to, I don't know, it goes down to like a little ditch is what I call it, and then kind of sways back. We only bought, the ground we bought was no farm ground. David, Ruth, and the family would not sell us any farm ground. They basically sold us what grasses there, and my father-in-law called it, basically you bought a ditch ground that wasn't worth nothing. But we did it anyway, and it was either buy it all or buy none of it. But like I said, we're not, we're not here to compete with any car business. Anybody like Travis Turpin, we have a very good relationship with him outside of town. We're not here to work on cars. We don't work on cars in New London, and we don't want to work on them down here. Tires, we only have tires for a couple of our customers, and it won't be, we won't be competing with these tire guys either. The customers we have are big corporate accounts that we do on a daily basis. But what we will be here to do is for car towing, semi towing, semi wrecks, car wrecks, broke-down vehicles, you know, broke-down semis. We don't perform service calls on cars. It's only semis. But being in the city is kind of important for the owner of this company because he always likes to, he always likes to be part of the community. He likes, you know, he says there's no better feeling in the world than seeing a bunch of seven-year-olds out there playing T-ball with his name on their shirt, knowing that they did. And like I said, if there's ever any issues, please come to us. You can get ahold of any of us, and we'll take care of the situation.
I know our fire chief speaks highly of this.
Yes, and I tell you what, I've always said, your guys is fire department, for a volunteer fire department. You could, if they're working on the side of the road, if they're working in an accident, a fire, you would never know they're not a full-time paid fire department. Them guys spend a lot of time training. Last fall, we did some training up there with them in the parking lot right behind the hotel, and brought them up some equipment to flip over and cut up and stuff. And they do, they do a really good job.
For education training?
Yeah, riches, they're very professional, and they're, you know,
Thank you.
They're definitely good in the area, and they're good as a half. And like I said, we want to, we want to hire local people. It's not, you know, it's a local, and especially for the business we're in, because if you're broke down on the side of the road, you don't want to wait for me to drive from New London to come and get you. You want that person that lives uptown to get there and get you. All of our, all of our people that we have are all background-checked. They're all, we run background on everybody. We drug test regularly. I mean, we, we go for a quality person, and it's not just whoever up one body. You know, and that's the way we've always been. We've been in business over 50 years, and it's not, it's not because, you know, we try not to make foolish mistakes. Sometimes it happens.
Sounds like that annexation process, probably in conversation with the city attorney first? Is that what needs to happen? John?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you, when you talked to the neighbor, I'm sure you talked to the Walkers?
The family right next door, I'm not sure what his name is.
Okay, but the Walkers, the first one is you go uptown?
Okay, on the, that's, that's Justin's mother-in-law, right? Doesn't talk to his mother-in-law?
Yeah.
Okay.
How do they feel about annexation? Because if we're going to have to annex, we're going to have to take it.
Yeah, I don't know. We haven't, we haven't approached them on that. We haven't approached our neighbor on that. I just, I mean, I thought, from my understanding, the property across the street was annexed, was already in the city. Is that part of the city property or no? Not sure.
On your?
I thought, my understanding it was, and that's my, I spent 10 years on the city council interviewing. But I thought as long as there was property touching any corner, that it could be annexed.
We'll have to check.
And if it could be, great. And if it can't be, I understand. And like I said, a lot of people say that's foolish and stuff, but it's not for us.
Everything you said makes sense, and it sounds very, you know, encouraging, and, you know, we'll look into that annexation process, and you want to get with John and set up that, or do you want to do your legwork first and give his contact information and reach out to? I forgot your first name.
My name is Bobby. Brian, any computer, any emails and stuff, he will be the manager of that. He's, he'll be in our office down here as well. Brian Reed here is kind of overseeing all three, all three of them. He don't oversee all the locations, but he works in the office of all three locations. He takes care of the emails, all the stuff that Bryce Lattis will have time to do. And like I said, we want to, we want to give back as much as we can to this community because this, this community, even with us being in New London and Durham, has been really good to us. We're here on a daily, we're here on a daily basis already. There's not a day, you know, I was in town today, it's on one. There's not a day that goes by where we're not in this town. So we just right to the thought, we might as well, you know, there's a need for it, we might as well come here.
Sure.
And I did personally go out and talk to Travis, because, and to make sure, are you sure you're not getting back into wrecker business? Because we don't want to step on toes. And, you know, if he would have said, yes, I'm getting back into it, we'll be in the heavy stuff, you stay in. You know, if you want to keep the cars and stuff, we'll stay separate. He assured me he didn't want back in it.
All right, Bobby, is Bobby or Bob Lee?
Bobby, please, sorry.
Bobby, Brian? John's got your contact information. Let him do his part of the process and reach out to you.
All right, thank you guys very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on if there isn't anything else. All right. Consent agenda. Council, could you look over the amended minutes from January 11th, 2024? Jennifer, if you could clarify what the amended part of those minutes were?
He went down, he got mixed up on the minutes. He went down to get those, so if you want to take a look at the minutes from the 25th.
Okay.
He's supposed to be permitting the amendment, but what the amendment was, was previously the minutes didn't disclose. There was a decision made about waiting till after we've had meetings with the Rural Fire Department, or Rural Fire Protection District, before any more payments were issued. And I went back and reviewed my minutes, reviewed my Q2, and I just wanted to make sure that reflected in our minutes and clarified. So that is the only paragraph that is being amended, is just to note that the decision was made to table any more payments until after conversations and meetings had been placed.
Got you. Okay. So, council, look over January 25th amended minutes.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January 25th, 2024.
Have a motion to approve the minutes from January 25th, 2024? Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Financials? Did you review the accounts payable? Even on January 25th, 2024?
Yes, there is one, just one for now. Or for one, for current, I guess I should say.
Payment was made to the auditor. We, he requested it because he had been told that it had been sent twice, and in fact, it hasn't been sent. So I went and sent it. The quickest the post office could do it was two days, and provided him with a picture of the tracking number, and it has been received, so he has been paid.
It does still work in progress because we've been having to slow down a little bit and reach out to those vendors and ask them how many payments have been received to make sure our records are accurate because the records that we previously had had some gaps in them. So we're making sure our records are accurate and no duplicate payments are issued.
Let me break this down for you. I'll just put it out there for you. Jennifer's being nice. So council and myself are misinformed, is how I'm going to word this, as to what tasks were being completed, when in fact, we were told bills payable were all caught up. Several times, they were not. We were also told that everything, accounts receivable and accounts payable were put in our bookkeeping system and properly being recorded. Nothing was put in the bookkeeping system. So Jennifer had found, a vendor had reached out, I think, and said, hey, I owe you because you've paid three times this invoices, this invoice. And then we've also got calls that, where's my check? So Jennifer personally delivered the payment to Palmyra for their contracted services with us, that they're supporting us in, you know, utility training, and that was very upsetting to me because Palmyra's city administration has been very supportive of our efforts to get our people properly trained, and they weren't being paid. So they, she delivered that check personally and got them paid. So that's that.
Have a motion to approve bills payable presented in January, or January 25th, and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we're to be, utilities collection policy. Yes, accounts payable presented on January 25th, 2024. Is on this agenda. I think it was the, was it January 25th bills, or does that date need to be changed? Okay, presented on February 8th. I wasn't for sure if it was passed, so I left it as is.
I apologize. We do have new staff, and there is a learning curve, and he didn't receive training, like I understood that he had on how the agenda works. So he got a cram session, and he, and I realized there was a few things missing, but he did amazing today, getting these packets together and getting them out for the committee to review. He did a great job.
He's doing a fantastic job. I've been throwing things at him, and he's been, you know, doing the research from Murma's website. He got on Murma's website and was finding forms for me. And Jennifer, we want him to be the official person in charge of the agendas and recording the minutes, and eventually, all of those things then downloaded on the website once we get support for getting that website brought up to date as well. But right now, unfortunately, our main focus has to be the financial aspect of things, so just the way it is right now. Ladies.
As mentioned before, here, I asked Peter and myself to work on restructuring the collection policy. We've presented another revision to you all in your packet. A couple of things, since the one was emailed out, we highlighted in the policy. The first one noted is highlighted in yellow here about the service initiation fee. We've added that on there for the new applicants. We already do that. It's nothing new, so I was just, we're just clarifying that in the policy. The next highlight in green, I wanted to double-check your all's opinion on this. This is currently in our policy, and I just want your opinion on keeping it in the policy and make sure that's how you want us to move forward.
And it wouldn't be, because I think there was some, like, maybe some misunderstanding, like if a landlord has his personal utilities at his house because he owns that property and it gets disconnected for non-payment, we're not going to go to his property because that utility that's getting disconnected is not in his name. It would only be affected by the ones that are totally in your name. I mean, so as long as you're not renting houses out and letting people keep them in your name, then it's going to have no effect on your house.
And that was a main concern.
I think that was a misunderstanding the last time. So if we have a landlord that's notorious for not catching all his, when we flip them back and forth between landlords, and he doesn't come in and fulfill paying his bills at one because there is a few that, you know, then, okay, we're going to shut off, you know, so that will get them to stay on track. But it's not going to affect your house unless you leave it in your name.
I got seven houses, and one, one of them rented, moved out. That house could become delinquent. Are you telling me you're going to go around and shut my other six houses off because they're?
Because it's only going to, it's going to go back into your name after they move out. So then as long as you pay the bill, you know what, because it's going to be read out on the day you call us and tell us, hey, this person moved out. I didn't know they left. It's going to be read out in their name the day you call us. So then it's only going to go back into your name that day until you get it rented out again. So that's how that, I mean.
So it's not by who owns the property, it's who the utility bill is in, whose name the utility bill is in.
So with your opinion, is this something to keep in the policy then?
Anything wrong with that, Brad?
I don't see a problem with it. I would kind of like to see making each address separate, but as we talked, and every address is in a different tenant's name, so they're not all tied together. So I don't see a problem with what you're saying.
And Brad was in today, and we spoke with him, and he had some questions, and we looked over those sort of things, and I think it went well.
Didn't meter deposits get changed?
And that was another, we discussed that at the last meeting regarding averaging of deposits. Of course, it's your decision, but I just wanted to, you know, say someone's coming to move into a property, that property's been vacant for six months, and you're going back on the previous four months. They're not going to have much to pay the deposits. Or if a house of, you know, seven move out and one person's moving in, that one person's going to be paying a higher deposit because of the previous tenant.
So it's best to leave a flat rate across the board?
In green on the second page, we discussed this as well. We didn't really know what direction to go on here, so we're needing your opinion on this as well. And this is regarding the deposit when a property is purchased. We require one now, but if they're in good standing, it's refunded to them after two years, or one year?
One year.
One year. And that's for everyone. We didn't know if, since they're purchasing the property, did you all still want to have them make a deposit on the property that they're committing to live in in town? Or how did you want to, so you do a lateral transfer? I'm sorry? If you did, you would have to do just a lateral transfer. Well, if someone coming from out of town is buying a house in town, do you still want them to have a deposit on that property?
Since they bought, they're vested in the community. Can you waive that? Or do you want to charge them the deposit, but then give it back to them, which then it's a matter of, you keep track of any time you can have it? So I mean, it's either, to us, it would either be, you do it the same way across the board, renter or the hunt landowner, or we just waive it if they bring the paperwork in saying they bought the house and that they're vested, that they're, you know.
What's to say they just bought a property to be a rental property? What's to say they just bought a property to be a rental property? You know, or they, they buy the property and they live there a couple of years and then they sell it and then they buy, you know, cause they're not necessarily committed long term still.
Right, and yeah, so that's why we're kinda leaving it up to you guys, how you wanna go with this. I mean, we've talked to other towns. Palmyra, of course, Rich only does not. If they, um, I believe Kristen told us that people are buying the house over there, they do not require them to have a deposit, but Harry, of course, does. Shuffler, everybody pays a deposit and you just get it back when you move out or you pass.
And it's kinda nice to have that deposit sitting in an account because what if the AMI is, is damaged and, um, you know, that has to be repaired. So it's still, yeah.
I would like to see you waive that, waive that fee for landlords that are in good standings for a two-year period instead of taking their money, holding it for two years and giving it back to them. Uh, if you've got existing properties and you've already proved yourself on making your payments on time for a two-year period, uh, you waive that.
Say I bought a fresh property and I'm gonna fix it up, okay? And then you're gonna get rented. Do I have to put a deposit down? Then once my renters move in there, you gonna collect the amount of deposit from them? Am I gonna get my deposit back then?
That's what we're, we're trying to figure out, what.
Well, I'm like Brad, I keep working with standing with City Hall, everything. I think the landlord, you know, should do a little, you know, leeway and, and, you know, have to be waived the deposit.
They're registered landlords. Because if you're a registered landlord here, then maybe that's how we go about it.
I would like to see somehow, and this is gonna be a process, because we, we have never tackled our ordinances for, uh, property owners that have rental properties. Like Hannibal has a whole housing, you know, board that deals with, their, their landlords have to follow certain standards. There can be no broken windows. There has to be secure doors. There has to be proper insulation. There needs to be smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors. I would like to see somehow this deposit agreement tied to whether or not they're fulfilling the standards to ordinances we may adopt for keeping landlords accountable so they don't become slum lords.
That's a good point.
Like it's on Monroe Street.
And, and, and.
I mean, if they got broken windows, they got hurting windows, they got moldy.
Not, not saying you guys are slum lords, but I would like to see, um, I, I've always wanted to do this and I haven't even got to it during my term, is to get with, uh, landowners that, uh, rent properties and say, hey, uh, get Hannibal's policy, get whoever else and, and sit down and say, devise a ordinance that states if you're renting properties, you are held to these standards in Monroe City. So we don't have dilapidated structures and trailers that have floors falling in and are being rented to people. So I, I don't know, can we, can we hold off on changing this until?
I don't know if we should because can we revisit it? If, can we get this in place?
Yeah, you could. I mean, that's, this could be amended anytime down the road.
Good point. And, and kind of what I'm thinking from here is it would be more like someone to inspect the properties too. And so there'd be a whole process.
Right. Yeah. Okay, that's true. My call, I'm gonna get out.
Okay.
So council, what, what did you decide? I kinda, I gotta.
So if the landlord maybe is registered with the city as a landlord, I would object to waiving their deposit.
Because the renter is, there's gonna be a deposit collected from the renter.
If not, you've got to double work.
Okay, is that the consensus here?
What is, what we decided is somebody's just purchasing a house.
Yeah, if it's not a rental.
They just wanna pay the deposit and give it back in two years.
Yeah.
So if somebody's buying a house though and they haven't established good credit with another utility company like REA or, you know, some other town that they've moved here from, you would charge them a deposit even though they've got a proven payment record?
Yes, we discussed that.
That person would have to obtain that information.
Yeah, Linda, I think because the conversation was had, how, how do we know they're, they're gonna buy a house? Okay, and they, they've got, you know, good standing with other utility companies. We don't know if they're just staying in that house two years or 20 years. Maybe they're buying it and they're gonna buy another house and.
I'm, I'm just thinking, when I had a prop, property in Rawls County and I moved to town, I didn't have to pay a deposit because I had a good utility payment record. So it seems like you would be penalizing someone.
Who's been paying their bills.
Who has a good, good track record. You know, whether they bought the house or, or rented a house, it doesn't matter. They have a big record of paying their bills. So I know when I moved back into town, I didn't have to pay a, a deposit.
And what's the current thing that you are supposed to?
Everybody has to and that's what all the town. So did she say in her way that?
I, I did, because I think it was Jackie called REA and said, you know, Clarence Cameron water, whoever. Yeah, there's nothing on her.
Oh, see, it says it. So the question at hand is, do we want, um, if a property is purchased, do we want to still have, and they're gonna be a, an owner, do we still want to require them to pay a utility deposit if their previous, um, right, was in good standing? They're buying a home, they've always paid the utilities at their previous residence. Do we require a deposit?
So then what are you, are you gonna go just so they can, you have to know delinquencies at all with their former?
Or do you wanna leave it that everybody pays a deposit and then two years of very good standing that it gets refunded?
But I think that, you know, you wanna give it back in two years. It should be applied to their account. That's the way it's gonna go, but only for homeowners, not renters.
Right.
It wouldn't necessarily be refunded after those two years. We would apply it to. Yeah. That's what we do now.
So what would be the difference between a homeowner and a renter? I mean, if you have a, try to, bills, you pay them whether you rent or buy?
Well, I mean, their thought process is when you buy a home, you're more invested. You're gonna stay there. You're not gonna be topping properties is, I think the thought process with the difference.
But you mean if you rented in, in other.
In another town, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you either pay your bills or you're done.
I say.
This is something you need to think on. It can always be amended, like, um, John mentioned earlier.
All right, what's the next highlighted area, I guess?
Uh, the next page, um, in yellow. We are just outlining that, uh, we will accept payments up until the next morning when we come into work, uh, and when they're dropped in our overnight outside. When we come in and process those, they would still be accepted without penalty. And we are also proposing to accept the US Postal Service, uh, postmark for, uh, the deadline as well. So if we get a, if it's the 30th of the month and we get a bill that was postmarked the 15th, we waive the penalty.
Okay. Not a lot of control we have over that.
Right, right, right. We have been dealing with that and fixing them as customers have called and showed, I mean.
And, uh, there is a correction in there as well. Uh, it should be postmarked by the 15th, not the 23rd. And then on the next page, in yellow, um, currently our, the electric department and gas department, they will post the delinquent notices on doors for residents. And we are taking up their time from doing their work that they could be doing for their departments and for the city. And, uh, we were wanting to just put on our bill, that their bill would now be considered their delinquent notice. So that way they would have that to use for, um, aid, for assistance, because that's what they would always need for, you know, cleaning cats or the services. And, uh, that we would just not be, uh, delivering them or sending them out any longer. It would just, their bill would be considered their delinquent notice.
Makes sense. Just doing double work when you do that.
Yeah. On the next page, the first item is, we're just outlining a period. I think it just said, uh, before, if, you know, after good effort is made, there wasn't a, a timeframe there. So we were just putting a date with that, uh, some of these calendar days. And, uh, that's the same thing with the final bill accounts. We were adding a time period of days rather than leaving it open ended. Budget payment plan, I know we kinda discussed this last time. We're proposing that it would just be for the residential customers only. Um, of course, that's up to you all. Commercial customers, they could easily rack up a large bill in a short amount of time. And if they're on budget and they're paying this fee down here when their bill's up here, um, what are your all's thoughts on that?
So budget payment plans for residential customers only.
Isn't that what other towns follow?
Yeah, I mean, you and the net didn't just sit down and pull these things out of the air. They have been doing homework and discussing these policies with other municipalities and gathering information, so.
And then there at the end, of course, we have a return check, uh, fee on there. And the repayment and how to collect payments if, if we do receive, uh, one due to insufficient, sort of close account.
There would be no more payment plans. There would be no more promises to pay. There would be, you hear an active, you know.
And we'll be going back to the old timeframe of the due date.
Fifteen.
Of the 15th of the month. Right now, the way it, it stands, they have until the 25th. They get their bills the first part of the month. They have until the 25th to pay without penalty. Then a penalty's added and they get like another two weeks or better to pay with penalty. It's almost a 45-day window for them to pay on the bill.
Yeah.
You know, it was a problem for a few months with the postal service, not getting people their utility bills. But they're still responsible for getting those bills. Call me, but it didn't, Kevin didn't break out. Cause we're not responsible for the postal service. So they're still responsible, like, for getting that paid by 15.
And we did get this last cycle of bills out earlier, um, in case they were gonna be sent out of town to, uh, be sorted. So as long as we're able to get them out sooner too, I think that will help.
And that's by the change in the date of reading.
Yeah, and that was part of changing the read meter read dates as well. Uh, right now they read on the third Monday, Tuesday, or Tuesday, Wednesday of the month. And this would, uh, have them reading on the second, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday of the month. Of course, unless there's a holiday. Uh, John has, um, redone an ordinance for us. And it would be repealing the current ordinances regarding disputed utility accounts. All of that information is still in the current policy. So, but when you repeal this current ordinance, it will still, it will go into the new ordinance.
And then the reference sheet, that will now go with their application. When they fill out an application, like Brad already took some today that as soon as somebody, I mean, the landlord, as soon as they know they got somebody looking at the house, because this would not, this would stop us from them coming in in the morning and saying, okay, our guy's gonna turn your power on at 2:00 o'clock. No, we need this form. And so the customer is gonna be, have to take this paper and get it sent back to us. So that gives them, you know, when he talks to them and gets it rented, gives them enough notice to get it faxed back to us so that when they come in. But that would be from their previous, you know, where they rented, if they rented anywhere, had utilities anywhere else. So we would just attach that to the application.
Our, our plan is if it is approved this evening, um, we will get copies made for every property in town. The guys read the meters the third week of this month. And, uh, we could hopefully see if they could deliver them as a read meters. And then this wouldn't go into effect till April 1st. So that would give them time to review and hopefully maybe move their finances around maybe to help accommodate for our new buildings and set up. How long are we gonna handle the people, the citizens that are already under a payment plan?
We have Don, are they?
They will stay. And if they're set up on a six-month, that should, if this goes on, they should. They should all be caught up by August, September?
Uh, yeah, July, yeah. Same as like people that are, you have causes now that sign contracts. I mean, we would still have to give them their deposits back because that was in the contract we did sign. They would just be moving forward. This is how they're employed, so.
It's gonna take a few months to work its way through the system.
I have a question. If you have a commercial account that has a large, and they're on budget billing and they have a large credit, what do you do with that?
Uh, at the end of the budget year, that credit would stay on their account and it would be used for their future bills. Is that what you mean?
You would apply it to existing bills?
Their, their, yes. No, they're, they're ones that they would be receiving later. You said they have a credit? Right, yeah.
If they have a huge credit, then you're going to spread that out over months or all in one month or what?
It, it would go, that credit would just be, stay on their account until it's used up from the, uh, new bills.
Right, say they got a thousand dollar credit, January's bills 400. Well, they'll take 400 off that thousand. February's bills 300. They'll take 300 off the thousand and the whole bill.
So you said no new commercial, but, but the ones that are already existing.
Yes.
We'll let them continue with that.
Yes.
For how long?
Uh, till this budget year's over, which would be October.
Do you have any questions, council?
So that's what we had.
I'd just make a note, if y'all are gonna vote on it and approve it, uh, we need, if you wanna change the due date to the 15th, like they discussed, we need to have a motion to amend the ordinance. Cause it now reads the 25th.
We also provided you a copy of a landlord designation form. And this is mentioned throughout the, uh, policy. Yeah. So we were just providing, not that we're gonna review as well. Uh, Brad Farn was in today. We talked with him and he had some, um, questions on things. And, uh, the one item that, uh, we wanna look at is on the back side, number six, under assumption of risk. It'd be that last sentence there. Uh, we'd like to strike that from the agreement.
It starts with landlord also assumes the risk that a new tenant may elect to sign up utility service.
Is there one more?
Well, the way that.
Well, the way they explain that to me, makes me think a phone call between them and myself would eliminate that happening. What that's kind of saying is, if a landlord or a tenant moves in, puts utilities in their name, and then turns around, moves out, or takes the utilities out of their name a couple months later to continue to live there, then the landlord's responsible for their, for their utilities during that point in time. The way they explained to me in the city hall was, if they make a phone call to me and say, is this tenant moving out? I say, not that I know of. And they're going to put the utilities in my name, I got to okay it first before, before the utilities is going to switch into, into my name. I have to pay, we lost my solidity.
We had some people that, before, it was previous that I had put the utilities back in the land, in the landlord's name. He didn't, they didn't even know that person was gone, didn't even, wasn't even made aware that the utilities were, and got this bill because, they, you know, I don't know, I don't know why he didn't get his rent or whatever, but the utilities were already back in that landlord's name. I did for like two months, and that guy's like, I didn't approve, I didn't say he could put these in my name. And, you know, he got stuck, I mean, that was clear where that all comes from, so that was why we started calling, you know, and he, you know, several of them call us when they know that he's in.
I mean, just my thought, I, I don't see a problem with the paragraph, because it's between the landlord and the city saying, you know, the city's not going to be at fault if there's a, you know, broken pipe, water damage, things like that. And then, you know, to Brad's point, if a, if a tenant, if Brad gets a bill because a tenant didn't switch it over at city hall, then that's an issue for the landlord to take up with the tenant and say, you owe me this money. Is my thinking.
And we told Brad, I mean, we're, we'll do our best. Our plan is to still call all the landlords when they have a tenant moving out. When they have a tenant moving in, we still plan to call the landlords. Sometimes we have to leave a message, sometimes they don't come back, return calls, but that is still our thing to reach out to them. So regarding number six, have you got any agreement? From what I'm hearing from the attorney, that's the recommendation. Okay.
May I add a question?
I'm sorry.
I got another point to make, and I've already talked to ladies about that. But on the first page, under responsibilities, the second paragraph, it's the last sentence of the second paragraph. The utility is hereby authorized to make any investigations of landlord's financial and credit record through investigative or credit agency bureaus or other methods. I don't feel like they'll run the credit checks on, on the year, time a tenant's using their property.
True.
Yeah.
I'd like to get that reviewed also.
That's pretty extensive there, I believe, but, so. That's pretty costly. Yeah, and so if we got to strike that, that would be.
My concern would be, if it, I mean, you want something in there for some fly-by-night landlord that's coming to town, which we all know happens. It's not saying you're going to run an investigation every time a landlord fills this out, but you have that ability. I mean, I'm not worried about you. But we all know landlords that have left the city, that come in and leave the city holding the bag and then they live in other states, so.
I, I see that point a little.
So we don't need to cross anything off of six, we don't need to cross anything off of paragraph that was just read. If the council is in favor of this new policy, then first.
We heard on, that's under John's report.
Okay.
Are we, did we decide on everything in the policy? Or did you still thinking about these green highlighted sections in there or?
I think the only one that was kind of still in question in council's mind, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the, the, um, yes, thank you. So do you want to leave it as everybody pays a deposit? Or do you want to, if they're purchasing the property, they do not have to pay the deposit?
And if that is the holdout, maybe just according ahead and approving as is, but then come back with an amendment on that? To get this going.
Because that's a relatively minor change, but it's not coming into effect till April.
Okay. But if I'm understanding correctly, first they need to, a motion needs to be made to amend the ordinance and change the date from the twenty-fifth to the fifteenth?
Correct.
Okay.
That's all we have then.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Mary, did you really go with the MA bank update, did you need to?
You can, Council.
I'd say, if we're going to vote on this, I'd say do it now while it's fresh and always mine.
Right, yeah. It is cold in here.
I don't like it, I'm just right. And this is the new ordinance here?
Yes.
Or existing?
It starts repealing the other two sections and then it. It's on paragraph.
I got it. Underfilling the payments.
Okay, so this one says the fifteenth, what's your, so?
One says the fifteenth.
Okay, so it's, okay, it's correct.
Well, okay.
If.
Yeah, it says utility bills are due on the fifteenth.
Okay, okay.
So we're good with that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Would you just want to take a bet?
Which you'll say the date?
April first.
Yeah, April first.
Hopefully two, we're hoping maybe by that time we could have the front desk maybe worked on, so we would have the electronic statements and all that all go in the AC, you know, the electronic, the credit card payments, all that with the front desk. We would like to try to do it all at one time, but.
Let's shoot for that again.
Because that would eliminate more than postal problems and all that with everybody who would sign up for each statement, so.
All right, Council, the ball's in your court.
We're just approving one. Make a motion to approve and ordinance repealing sections eighty-six point zero eight point zero three zero and eighty-six point zero eight point zero four zero and replacing them in the most applicable code.
All right, motion's on the floor. Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I need a second reading.
Right, motion for second reading?
Make a motion for second reading. Ordinance repealing sections eighty-six point zero eight point zero three zero and eighty-six point zero eight point zero four zero, replacing them in the nursing municipal code.
A motion on the floor for second reading? And a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, ladies, for all your hard work.
Okay. Seasonal, I'm going to skip the MA bank, I'll let that be in the street clerk's report, so we're down to seasonal bids. OB came in and said we probably need to get a jump on this and actually be ahead of the game this year with getting the bids out for summer help for the street department and lifeguards and tool personnel.
Along with the concrete asphalt.
Yep, con- concrete asphalt bids go out to, concrete asphalt bids and also the mowing, mowing bids. So those four things, we would like to get those in the newspaper next week, so.
We do need discussion, and if you guys want to make a motion on, for the seasonal mowing. It was previously a three-year contract. It was discussed that a twelve-month contract might be better, because then we can have discussions if it's not being mowed appropriately or like, you know, up to standards, then it's a twelve-month contract and not a three-year contract. It's currently a three-year.
Okay.
And also on the seasonal help, previously had been posted for twelve dollars and thirty cents an hour. So if you want to raise it, you'll need to make a motion to raise that. I would recommend at least for the wage.
Well, that is twelve thirty, isn't it?
It is, I thought it went up on January first.
It adds twelve thirty.
Thirty, okay.
And I think OB had said, last year, how many did we have?
We have two for the street department and then we have the lifeguards, right?
Well, we had two for street department and we had one for gas, but we were so shorthanded with gas is kind of why we decided on three. Yeah, so it might be just best to have two for the street department this year. It's up to you guys, y'all think about that. Okay, and how do you feel about moving that contract, changing that to a one-year instead of a three-year contract? So if I could have a motion to?
Maybe best leave it at three instead. Because a lot of contractors, if they know you're only bidding for a year, they might not even pull a bid in because you're looking at a three-year deal and they're going to bid it. And who knows what the price of everything else is, and we could get a bargain after year two or three because gas could go up and they're locked in. So I, my personal thing is, I think it'd be, that's three years.
First line.
Go up to.
Compromise on two?
Try it, please. I'll go with two.
I think it's a compromise.
Okay.
Make a motion to move the mowing bids to twenty-four month contracts.
All right, a motion on the floor to move the mowing bid contract to a two-year instead of three? And a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and motion for approving two summer help hired for the street department? Thoughts on that? At minimum wage?
You have a motion.
I have a motion to hire two summer help for the street department at minimum wage? Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, so all of this is going to go to the paper. Um, when it was over, we needed a pool manager.
Uh, we usually have a pool manager and how many lifeguards? I don't remember. Several. Last year, we kind of ran into a, a problem because we waited too late in the season. A lot of these young people already had jobs lined out, so I feel like we got a better chance to get that lined out. So I need a motion to go up for bids for, what was it, concrete and asphalt?
Hot mix and cold patch too.
Hot mix, cold patch, concrete, asphalt, and I think that motion.
All right, motion on the floor, a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
We need a motion for real.
Yes.
So how many lifeguards are we going to?
Well, we always can go out for applications.
Right.
And then we could decide.
Yeah, this is just a motion to put the, add in the paper.
Add in the paper, basically, was more than new.
And then they're waiting to pay.
That needs to go in the ad, so I don't remember, do you remember?
At minimum wage and then, isn't it, and then if they're returning lifeguards, I'm going to say.
With a wage on experience, it helps them better.
Okay.
Based on experience.
Okay.
For the manager and lifeguards, was, was the manager just for his one season?
Yes.
He needed it last year.
Yeah, she did, yes.
Yeah, it was just last season.
So I need a motion to go out for applications for a pool manager and for lifeguards with pay based on experience.
All right, motion on the floor? Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report, have a few things. We are evaluated every year with our insurance carrier, MRMA, and given a score. And then our rates are based on that score. So when he came and did the evaluation, our, and then he gives recommendations to, you know, what we can do to make that score better. And of course, the better the score, the better your insurance rate. So our score was seventy percent. We, we can do much better than that. OB's already been working on, I printed off the recommendations and gave it to him. He's been working on his. Jeff Arp with MRMA is going to be here in the morning at ten o'clock. Alex is kind of going to take this bull by the horn and go over the recommendations with Jeff. And Jeff is going to support us in how we can find some of these. A lot of this is like policy revisions and forms and stuff that need to be posted for safety and other issues. So Jeff is coming to help us and hopefully our goal is to go from seventy percent to ninety percent, so hopefully we get there.
Do we ever get any ordinance that can be paid for?
I'll let, I'll address that. Yeah. Jeff then will be back February twenty-third to do the final assessment and evaluation and, which will set our, our score and base our insurance rate for the next year, so. February twentieth, Josh Youngblood and Conda Berry from MPUA will be here. They will assess administrative needs as far as implementing best practices for filing, a filing system and supporting anything administratively that can make us run efficiently, effectively, and, and up to, up to par where we're supposed to be. So Josh and Conda will be here the twentieth. And those are services that MPUA provides for us that we, we can utilize, so, as being a member of MPUA, so. Monte Olson is a university adjunct instructor with fire departments. He teaches trainings, he is a plethora of information on how fire departments should operate. He is graciously agreed to come. We're trying, we're working out a date with the schedule of the attorney. My goal was to have a roundtable meeting, all of this discrepancy and, and going back and forth with Rule Fire Association and our Rule Fire District, how that relationship with the city and this other entity should properly work on all levels. So we're going to have a professional in here, an expert, to have a roundtable with everybody at the same table, attorney, myself, somebody from the Rule Fire Association, Chief Phoenix, all at the same table and figure out how this is supposed to play out. So we'll, you know, hopefully get this resolved quickly. The other thing is the lead service line project. It is required from DNR to have this project done by October sixteenth. There is a grant that's available through DNR. We are working, Jennifer and I are working on getting that sent in so we can hopefully get some money to offset those costs, because it's quite a project and we got to, we need to get rolling on it.
Till October what?
October sixteenth, but it has to be done.
Hey, you've already got the grant, though, you just need to advertise to get the vendors.
To do the, yeah, get that preliminary paperwork sent in, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's five hundred thousand dollars is what you have available.
I.
Is his audit scheduled to be complete February twenty-eighth?
Yeah, Steve Conley was, like I said, quite upset because he hadn't received payment, but he has now. I've also been in touch with Joey McLean, our, our bond guy, and February twenty-second, I talked to Steve, I think I mentioned this at the last council meeting, that was that a, a date that could be accomplished? That we would have a, an audit done by that date, and he said certainly. So, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure, I feel pretty confident that we will have one here pretty quick for in our audit, so.
People also asked me a couple different people if we can post on your, on this school base of age, the people that are filed that are gonna be ready to be out of the election.
Yes, I just was hesitant on that because we don't have the official ballot, so I'm gonna make sure.
We have to wait till the ballot, um, is fully certified and to crank, but I was gonna announce that after mine.
AmeriCorps proclamation, uh, I forget the gentleman's name if he's here, I, I don't recognize the, I don't see him here. I, I, my understanding was he was gonna be here tonight, so I really hate to move forward with reading that without, um, yeah.
We could find him.
Okay. And we did it last year and I thought it was something that just reoccurred every year, but apparently it's something that, the dates changed, but he's not here, so I'm just gonna, just gonna wait on that. That's all.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna start with Missouri Metal Crafts. You will have to flip until you see amendment to, um, promissory note. So, um, I've been working with Missouri Metal Crafts and I've been working with Cornerstone and, um, I think going forward, things are gonna go much smoother. Uh, we have, um, amended the promissory note to reflect the, uh, correct dollar amount, um, the, the dates in which payments will be issued, um, and just a lot more detail that will eliminate any questions or discrepancies of when, when that needs to be received. Um, and I went even a step further and asked them to provide a payment schedule that they intend to, um, keep. And I received all of that, that's exhibit, um, A and B, and, um, I went one step further and required them before this was considered executed, um, to show proof that they scheduled these wires, um, every single one of them, so if you go to the Chase Business, you will see where there is every single payment that's, um, due for this, this promissory note, the wire has already been scheduled, so there will be no more calling to see if payment's coming this day or that day. I requested them, them to do this if they, um, wanted to continue with the promissory note, so they sent this over today and it'll show you, uh, up to six payments at a time on here, but as soon as these payments or one has been made, the next one will automatically be issued. If you look on the front page of the Chase, it'll say, um, frequency, weekly, fifty-seven wires left. And so, and if you read on, the duration, fifty-seven wires remaining. So they, Cornerstone spent all day, um, to get this done, so we have proof that every single wire is gonna come at the appropriate date, it's not gonna be late, there's not gonna be the, you know, back and forth questions about is it delinquent or is it on time? Um, so I think this is gonna be much better going forward, a lot easier for them to not, you know, go into default and just be a lot easier to manage on both sides. Does anybody have any questions about that?
How much is that payment?
I'm sorry?
How much is that weekly payment?
Um, so their weekly payment is broken down, uh, seven thousand eighteen point seventy-one. And that first payment is scheduled for February thirteenth.
And then when is the last payment?
Um, the last payment was actually, uh, yesterday.
No, when will the last payment?
Will the last payment be issued? I don't know if it discloses that, cause I only had that print, I only printed the first two pages, uh, actually I know it says it here somewhere.
Fifty-seven weeks from now?
April twenty-five.
April twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand twenty-five? It discloses it in the promissory note.
That's in addition to their current bill every month.
Yes, that is in addition to their current bill that must be paid timely every month. Council, do you guys have any questions on that?
Is it default?
I'm sorry?
And if they default?
And if they default, um, we notify them that they're in default on the promissory note, um, and John, you were-
Yeah, we're saying you filed a lawsuit on their note.
But, um, we still can go shut them off with you notice, though, correct?
Right.
For delinquency, yes. And, uh, I'm hoping with these scheduled payments, um, and working with Cornerstone, that we're not gonna have to worry about defaults. At least that was my goal in forcing them to go ahead and schedule all fifty-seven payments and, and show us the schedule and to prove of that.
Thank you for going those extra steps.
You're very welcome.
Do you need to approve this promissory?
I think, yes.
I make a motion to approve the new amendment to the promissory note dated February first of two thousand twenty-four with Cornerstone.
I have a motion to approve the new promissory note with Cornerstone?
Seven.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries?
Thank you. Very well done, guys. And MABank, um, it was voted at the last council meeting for MABank to be liquidated and those funds be rolled into our F and M bank, um, that has already taken place. I, I, I know there was communication that it had already happened, but it, it had not been liquidated, um, the mayor and I were actually able to get that done, um, this week. The funds are already in the F and M account, um, so that is all good to go. Uh, we have the records for any type of audit that we may have and then for our own account recons, we have those as well. Um, the ballots, uh, the ballots have all gone off to print, so the names can be, be published. Uh, would the council like to run in the paper? Who is running for what ward? Okay.
We usually put the official ballot is put in the paper.
Post the official ballot. So, I'm assuming, cause there's ballots for Rawls County, Marion County, and Wesleyan Monroe, um, to fulfill, I believe, requirements, we will need to publish those Rawls County, Monroe County, Marion County, correct? Or someone?
You need to publish all three of them in a legal paper in your general circulation area, which would be the like is that or?
Yeah, you don't have to go there where you pay them.
No.
They don't have to go to counties.
Right.
You only have to do it in one.
Our local, okay. Uh, as for the, um, the ordinances, UniCode, um, and Civic Plus, uh, Alex has spent some time this week on getting in touch with Civic Plus. Civic Plus is the company that owns UniCode. UniCode is the software that, um, manages all of our ordinances, um, it even has policies, but it's where, um, any, any of the residents can go log into UniCode and pull up the ordinances. Um, and it's a good software tool for City Hall staff to be able to scan in new ordinances as they're adopted. I know it was talked about, um, and the process was started, I think, a year and a half, two years ago, uh, it was never finished, uh, but that's a project I would like to start on, um, and, and at least get that rolled out because it, so far we paid for half of it, um, you know, we might as well move forward and utilize the, the rest of it and get, get our ordinances in there, get the correct up-to-date ordinances published and the ones that are, that have been superseded, removed from there and replaced with the right one. And so that's, that's my point.
You might check, I think the mayor already paid for that service if this wasn't being used.
We are waiting for documentation, um, Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, we're waiting on documentation from, um, Civic Plus and UniCode for what we, everything we have paid for in the, the contract, the post has sent that to us. Um, and I think there was, I think an employee thought they were supposed to back something to UniCode, but UniCode is a software tool that, um, City Hall staff is supposed to use and upload, um, just directly into UniCode and it publishes it for us. But we're waiting on that just to make sure everything, it has been paid for.
And the Civic Plus is the actual vendor?
Yes, and Civic Plus is for municipalities, they offer a lot of products, tools, Civic Plus is the actual company, UniCode is the software.
Well, they still honor our deposits and the, that project was unfinished?
Yes, I've already asked those, uh, it took, it took about a week for get them to say, to get them to say yes, but yeah, they, they will honor our pre, pre-existing one. Um, and if you wanna flip to the, um, Department of Treasury Internal Revenue Service, IRS check system, government entities page, if that helpful? This is just a copy that, uh, the previous, um, compliance check that was, um, opened by the IRS, um, has been closed, uh, completely satisfactory, uh, no further findings or actions as needed at this time, and we were given a satisfactory compliance check. Yes, I agree, fantastic. Um, moving on, did anybody have any questions before I was all of that? Going on to, um, the USDA change order, um, number eighteen. So, I did a full audit, um, of those files, um, and the findings of, of that audit that I did, um, caused me to reach out to Shawna Barnes, she's who is, um, been dedicated to us for USDA, anything and everything.
And this is just to clarify, it's the sewer, the new sewer point project?
Yes, sorry. Her and I went through the audit together, um, and we were able to determine that the city purchased land, um, that's what this vacant land contract is, um, and that cost was never reimbursed or offset, so that is unused funds that we should still be able to access and put to good use. We can reimburse ourselves for that amount. It, it never happened and probably should have. And there is also a garage door, um, opener that I've been working with George on, the wire, there's also a portion of the fence, um, that still needs to be finished, all of that, um, is gonna be able to be rolled into that, so I'm working with Shawna this week, um, and it should be wrapped up next week, but it should, um, equate into about thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of funds that previously we thought were unavailable to us that are now going to be available to us.
Nice.
Does anybody have any further questions about that? Um, I know there was previously lots of questions about the US Cellular account. I was finally able to get into the US Cellular account and we did a full account review. Uh, with US Cellular, we have seven hotspots, seven handheld devices, which means seven cell phones. They did send me the usage, which is on this page here. It will show you lines on the account first and usage on the second block. So there are a couple that aren't being used. Aren't being used fully, but during that account review with US Cellular, um, it was also, um, presented to me that US Cellular has, um, a lot of partners and several amazing programs that we are not taking advantage of at all. They currently have partners that work with police departments that, um, help those police departments with grants, with writing grants, locating grants, um, and also help with covering the funding until that grant goes into effect for, um, cameras, technology, new, complete new internal, um, computers in term of patrol units, um, desk PCs, uh, things that they are in dire need of, and I know our departments, um, could definitely use new equipment in all of those areas. Uh, so we have a meeting planned next week, uh, that Zach will also, uh, participate in and just kinda get an inventory of what technology they could really use over at the police department, um, and kinda start from there, get a plan together, get an estimate together. They also put an estimate together because it had been discussed that we need cameras, um, for the DMV side, uh, at City Hall, but probably would be a good investment to put cameras up at our city barns. Um, US Cellular currently has a program for municipalities that the camera and the service with unlimited, um, upload capabilities for the twenty dollars a month for the camera and the service, which is-
Her camera.
Her camera, which is a tenth of what I have found anywhere else. Um, they also have a service for municipalities, um, and a partner that, um, has several different programs to help when it comes to having council meetings, that helps apply, uh, tablets and devices for council members to follow along and not have an array of paperwork, um, and along with a screen for those to be projected on. The initial estimate, uh, for that cost was, um, he just did a quick estimate and it was, uh, fifteen tablet devices, two screens, with the cost for the equipment and the unlimited service was only three hundred dollars a month, and if you broke that down, that's less than twenty dollars, uh, per item, which is a huge savings compared to anything else I had looked up. We do have two more planning sessions, um, scheduled for next week, cause he, he thinks there is just numerous things that we're not taking advantage of with US Cellular that because we're a municipality, we're eligible for, uh, so I, so I think it's a, you know, gonna be a growing relationship and hopefully we can take advantage of some of those things they have to offer. And if anybody has any questions about this?
The two lines that are being used, what is the, what are the charges on those? Those formally, were they the police officers that we don't have in place anymore?
I believe so.
Is there a base paid for, per month?
Since these are zeroed out, since these were zeroed out, I initially thought that, um, we were only be char, only charged for the device, but I need to clarify that, uh, with Ryan Thury at US Cellular. And, and I do have access, um, to the US Cellular accounts now, so I can get in and, and actually get breakdowns of that, which is super, super helpful and I can answer any questions like that just from listening to that. Okay.
Hold on, think about it. Gary Ross from Holman, he said he had received a ten ninety-nine, yeah, from when he worked here, uh, during the month of October, cause he was requesting he be sent a ten ninety-nine, and he said he's gonna need that for his taxes.
So I need to get into testing that.
Can I ask a question, back to the Lake and Inland account, how was that discovered and what, what practices do we have in place that we don't have outlined accounts that we don't know about?
We knew it was there. It was from a former city clerk that was having trouble getting full bondage for bonding, and so we, uh, set money aside to cover the remaining co, costs so that she could be fully bonded, and since Hefferson is no longer with us, there was no longer need to have any account open. costs so that she could be fully bonded, and since Hefferson is no longer with us, there was no longer any to have any account open.
So you did know about the account, but did it show up on any of their financials?
Yeah. And you don't really miss that, so.
But I mean, that's been a long time, right?
Well, the account went back to twenty eighteen, I didn't, nobody here was even on it.
I didn't, I hadn't heard about it after a conversation with the former city clerk, and it was by accident, and when I asked about it, that was, I'd already been in six, eight months before. So then I just went over to Amy Bank and said, what account, does the account, does the city have any accounts with you? And she pulled it up and showed it, very wide.
And nobody on the council was even on the account, it was former elected officials.
Anything else, Nick? Um, the only thing I have left, which, um, the George council probably talked more about this than me, uh, he'd been asked to bring numbers back for the sewer saver at the last meeting. Uh, and he forwarded me those numbers, um, and-
Yeah, I can- Uh, this, uh, uh, the actual unit itself without the hose to connect it to the house was roughly a hundred and five dollars. That is the meter couplers on both sides and converting it to, uh, hose bid fittings. Then we're looking at roughly twenty dollars for the hose, so the cost to a city for a sewer saver that they're selling for a hundred dollars is a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And then a question was asked, do we continue with providing sewer savers or do we do away with sewer savers?
I think the last few, since this was everybody wanted to continue because it was better meant.
Okay, because what I, yeah. So we just need to up that price, at least to cover the cost that the city-
And replacement, wasn't that an issue?
Replacement is an issue because they were just replacing them without recharging them, if there was neglect on the person that had it. And we, was it specified in there, because when they had to bring those back in for reasons?
On the form, they fill out, they get one, yes. They, when they picked up the sewer saver, they received a form of when they were supposed to bring it back. There was feedback that the public thought that, um, and I, and I do think there were some notices sent out, um, but they thought we should have called multiple times and-
Sent the letter saying-
Sent the letters and knocked on the door and-
And-
Repossessed the sewer saver.
But it's on the form when they come in to request a sewer saver, it's right on there, we don't need to send notices, it's on the form. And I think it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's also on the form that they are responsible for replacement damage, yes. So it just, another one of those things that just needs to happen, you know, we've got it in place, it needs to happen.
We first, I'm wondering, if they don't bring it back in time to be reread, then they don't get the credit, is that correct?
It has to wait until the next year.
Okay, I'm good for that.
And I really think it's the end of September, then it goes on to October billing, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that's what it is.
Sounds right. Anything else, Jennifer?
That is all I have.
So the attorney's report?
Um, I hope everybody, I mean, the two ladies in the front row did a outstanding job on that utility policy, um, so I want to thank them for all their work. Also worked with, uh, police chief, uh, on a contract for the officer we're going to put through school, I think he's going to bring it up in his report. Uh, we also need to vote, I think I'm approving these new forms that we talked about, we approved the ordinance, but we didn't approve- I'm right.
It was-
The landlord designation form, the utility service reference request, and the utility service application.
Okay.
Those are already in place.
Oh, they are.
The only new one is the landlord.
Okay, so we need to vote on that one.
The landlord designation form is a new one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the landlord designation form.
I make a motion to approve the city of Mono City landlord designation form.
I have a motion to approve the landlord designation form, a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all, yeah.
All right. Uh, council committees planning zoning is, uh, Alderman Botkins, he's not here this evening, and I don't, they have not had a meeting since the last meeting. Uh, Parks and Rec? Doing that, okay. Minutes are in your, in your folder.
The cemetery walk, um, trees at South Park, several new trees that survived drought, South Lake, they're going to be replaced. Uh, the North Park ramp, we should hear back from in February. Uh, the review of the strategy planning presentation for the Parks and Cemeteries.
Your Kendrick gave an awesome presentation of how we should, um, you know, have a, a plan, a five-year plan in place for what improvements we're going to make to the parks. And, uh, Mr. Yates had, had expressed that he is, um, would like it if somebody else could step up and fill the shoes as chairperson of that committee. He's going to continue to do it until somebody expresses interest with the hopes that somebody will step up and express interest soon, so. If you know anybody that's interested, have them give us a call or reach out to Mr. Yates for more information. Anything else, hold on a minute. Economic development report, Alderman Botkins, um, they have not met, administrative report, Alderman Osborne?
Uh, I don't have anything, we currently don't have an administrative committee meeting planned, um, as the new license, we also have, uh, no vacation.
Thank you. Uh, nuisance review board, electric safety, Alderman Shoemaker?
Yes, uh, when is the last Wednesday?
Uh, the last Wednesday is the twenty-eighth of February.
Okay, we'll have a meeting.
Twenty-eighth.
At five thirty.
Uh, and we had a meeting this week, Wednesday evening, and I need to get those minutes typed up. We discussed, I'm sorry. We discussed, we wanted to get back on as scheduled, getting, uh, nuisance letters sent out so we can start again, um, attacking these, uh, dilapidated structures and nuisances that we have in our neighborhoods, so hopefully we can get a grasp on things and get things cleaned up before summertime and, and our beautiful new ball field that's under construction, you know, is done and we have traffic in town and we, we just want things cleaned up, so we're, we're working on it and, and, well, we got about ten to twelve properties, chief, that we are going to send letters out on within the next week, so back on the ball, yes.
Any more ideas on contacting a deputy or something to, uh, send out the nuisance notice? I think Russell had mentioned that, so that you wouldn't have a personal contact from someone in town.
I remember those conversations.
Yeah, I think we're going to proceed on it, just with all the other things going on.
Okay.
Nobody's contacted one yet.
Okay, so we also need a building inspector, and we had also discussed splitting those duties, making it a building inspector slash code enforcement officer. So we can fill both those roles and maybe have enough for a part, a full-time position between the two.
With someone from the outside.
Correct. Uh, city departments, uh, George, do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, only thing I'd like to ask is if we're going to keep with the sewer savers, um, where's the money going to come from to do them? I mean, we normally do about twenty to thirty a year, um, and in the past, we've used our maintenance budget, um, but I'd rather not do that, it really inflates what it looks like we're charging-
Okay.
-to the city.
Um, as soon as we get that audit and we know where our numbers are, where we can start with the budget, we will start having vegetarian meetings and we will discuss that in that vegetarian meeting as to where those funds should come from.
Okay, yeah, it'll just be a little bit of lead time on getting them, so the longer I wait, I might not have them ready for spring.
Gotcha, okay, noted.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Del Buckman isn't here this evening, with the airport, nothing to report from the library? Uh, OB, the street department, the report should be in your packet. Uh, electric department, Carrie Lee, um, I don't think he's here this evening, but his report is also in your packet if you have questions. And, uh, Mr. Osborne is here this evening and his report is, is, is it in here?
Nope.
Okay, but he is here, better yet, I'm on a-
I'm here answering, but you may ask. Very bad. Now, first off, we've been working on a lot of gas, I guess that'd be older, I just put a little bit of the older than the gas, because we've already had two underground gas leaks. Uh, luckily we could dig it up and down, created a number two, we got one over at seven thirty-five North Main, and one of them was over at, uh, nine oh eight Park Street. But the actual leak itself was on the surface that went to nine twelve, but it down the easement and turned and went in. I guess when you put the service in, that main didn't extend long enough for it to come straight out to it, so it had to come back to the line dead end right there. Anyway, it was threaded and it cracked and broke. Not completely into it, but it was pretty strong, we got out over there. Of course, we did it tonight, and I had to get a definite knife, told the guys, we got to get some better flashlights, I can't see. These flashes, it's hard to hold a flashlight and take a hole, even with another guy there, so we went and bought two Milwaukee lights with backup batteries in them. And, uh, hopefully we don't have to use them, but at least we'll have them now. We've got a magnet armory that can mount anything, or it's a pretty nice light. And, uh, those are the gas leaks, training, changing out bed gas meters, and, uh, a lot of training. Uh, look, and, and almost have pre-reading meters, uh, foot orders.
Is your two employees transferred to full-time?
Three, three. You got three, Adam Gregory, Rick House, and Scott Neff. Yep, they started ten sixteen to twenty-three, or Adam, ten twenty-four to twenty-three for Rick, and ten thirty to twenty-three for, uh, Scott. That's over a hundred days for each one, so it's only ninety days for probation, right?
Have you completed a ninety-day evaluation on it, Terry?
No, I haven't, I didn't know I was supposed to.
Look, I've got the paperwork printed off for him, it normally would be through the software, but I've got the paperwork printed off for him. Um, you, you did complete a, um, short, I believe it's like a thirty-day evaluation, um, you might have completed it by paper and it was uploaded into the system, so there is evaluation-
Okay.
-completed that shows that they are in good standing, um, there are, you know, additions to the workforce.
I can vouch for that, they, every time they're in here, they're just, they're, they're on it.
Oh, yeah, Adam's asking me questions.
Yeah, they're very eager to have more training and, and just, um, they work hard.
I think you're going to end up pretty decent employees. They're really green and they're, they're picking it up, it's going to take them a while. And normally we give them a fifty cent raise, but they came off of probation, I don't know if that's still in active or not.
It is in our, um, book.
Okay. So I need a motion to, um, move Adam, Rick, and Scott to full-time status with their fifty cent raise. Thank you. Motion, a second, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, any other questions? Dodorifer is running, it's just running manually right now, because we haven't got hooked up to a fan handle stuff yet, uh, I haven't had a chance to get down there. Between all the doctor's visits that I've been going to and crap. I don't know if you got it, but I have cancer. So, I gotta do treatment once a week, and- Yeah, it's okay. I think we got it all out, just going to give you the treatment now, make sure it doesn't come back, and I gotta go back once every three months. Huh? I need it. Anyway, if you got any questions? We won't have any answers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Chief James of the Police Department? Yeah, I think I've cleaned that so. Hang on, Ross.
Good evening, I did have a couple of things for you all tonight, one, I provided a form, uh, had some information on body worn cameras. I think at this point, finding out that we have the option for some alternate funding, possibly looking at grades, we push that off the police until the next meeting to figure out what's available for us there. That will kind of give you just a little ballpark of what we're looking at as far as, uh, what, what they will financially be. Um, outside of that, we do have a new hire, uh, well, we will have a new hire once he signs a contract with us. Uh, his name is Nate Riddelf, he's out of Columbia, uh, he's going to be going through the academy, which begins on February nineteenth with projected ending date of the middle of June. Uh, we will be sponsoring him through, initially we were looking at a cost of ten to twelve thousand for the academy, uh, however, we've now got that down to five thousand. We're looking with equipment and ammunition that we also have to provide, uh, the total investment of sixty-two hundred dollars at this point. And we have an additional grant that we have just applied for to make over the rest of the tuition, which would leave us with about fourteen hundred, uh, that we would be paying instead. If that happens, we would have to do a contract renewal as well, he's aware of that, he's all asked council meetings, see you all for meeting, asking questions if you have, uh-
Does this need to be a, and it works in sixteen thousand?
That was just my guess, and I guess too high, so.
Yeah, that was, uh, that was initial, what we thought we were going to be getting there once we put in the equipment and, uh, the ammunition as well. Fortunately, we were able to buy Holcomb that, saved quite a bit of money, and he has some of his own equipment that we didn't have purchased foreign, which also brought that cost down. So, uh, he does already have a pretty significant background, uh, he is a firearms instructor for law enforcement, also instructor for law enforcement tactics, so he's got a background in law enforcement a little bit already, uh, also in marketing, IT work, uh, so the contract we negotiated that he will be, while in the academy, at sixteen, what was it we went for, sixteen fifty an hour?
Sixteen fifty.
Sixteen fifty an hour for eight-hour class days, uh, there are some that will be a little bit longer, which will also be paid that additional for. However, any ride-alongs and training he does with us in that period, he will be non-commissioned officer, so he will still be at that sixteen fifty an hour, um, until he becomes post-certified. Once that happens, we will move him up to, uh, whatever our standard, our standard hiring wages is at that time, right now it's eighteen sixty, uh, which he's already agreed to that as well, so, um, outside of that, that approval wraps that portion up unless anybody has any questions for me.
And then, just to add on, he'll have three years, he goes to the city after he gets his certification, and if he leaves, leaves, he has to reimburse the city. Yeah, or whatever.
We have to renew this contract.
What was that?
We have to renew this contract, correct.
And the reason we backed that down from four to three was because of how much less the tuition was than what we originally anticipated, after this being under ten thousand dollars. Uh, I figured three would be more than sufficient for the payback period on that, um, that would make it to where two-thirds or one-third of that is payback would be reasonable for him, so.
How old is John?
Uh, he's in mid-thirties, yeah, so he's, he's got a little time with yours, though. he's got a little time with his belt.
Okay, so now I have a motion to approve the employment slash sponsor contract with the, uh, City of Metro City and a new hire for the Police Department. Have a motion? A second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I appreciate it, unless anybody has any questions for me, that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Fire chief, Anix is-
On call.
On call, okay. That's all we have for- Anything else? Did I miss anything? Did we ever get copies of the minutes that we couldn't get approved because Alex was making? Um, where were we at?
Yeah.
Did you get them? Uh, the, uh, amended minutes that you explained from January eleventh? I think those are Do I have a motion to, um, go into closed session? Yes.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to go into executive session. As provided under section six, ten, point zero two, one, the vice adjutant's security for hiring, firing, discipline, or recording of particular employees by a public governmental body.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Roll call vote, Alderman Shoemaker? Motion carries right now in closed session. When we reconvene and open, um, we will approve those minutes from General Shoemaker.
Yeah, so maybe they got their-
A motion to approve the vote made in closed session? Do I need to state, uh-
I'm just gonna add that.
Individual is hired for, uh-
Officer.
Administrative assistant in administration. Got a motion? Second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
You need to, uh, or approve the minutes.
Oh, thank you. Need a motion to-
So what did you go on?
Hiring at an office administrative assistant.
Does anybody have a, their, what would their do?
What?
What would their do?
Are those maybe downstairs?
Assisting the city- Like, a secretary, like assisting the city clerk and the city utility clerk later. And also possibly, uh, assisting the license office for that person that was out or- He's an administrative assistant.
Okay.
So it'll be city clerk, utility clerk, and two administrative assistants.
Okay, okay.
Which is what we have.
Um, so the update, if you look under section five, um, it'll say minutes update amended one twenty-six, twenty-four submitted for approval. Um, amendments approved, then that would be out of asterisk and went to, and go to approved minutes. Um, but I just wanted to clarify, cause I, I had not put that into my minutes, that the council has decided to table any more payments to the real fire protection district until conversations have taken place. Um, and so we can sit down with them and sit down with the experts, uh, that the mayor is bringing in with John Russell and just did, it was ironed out properly. Yeah, ironed out properly.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January eleven, twenty twenty-four with the minutes update amended on one twenty-six, twenty-four.
Have a motion on the floor, do I have a second? Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to adjourn, a second? Motion is second to adjourn, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, so adjourned.